Good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting of the town of Belgrade. It's October 5th, 601. And we want to start the meeting with a roll call. This is for the benefit of our secretary, you know, who's present. We have tonight Mrs. Penny Morrell at the board. We have Mr. Richard Baker, Mr. Nick Siccaro, and Mr. Peter Surgeon and myself, Sarah Langgett. On Zoom, we have Mr. George Seal. And also, we have President Mr. Hans-Josem Smussen. So I will entertain having the public to introduce themselves.
I'm Doug Frame, Golden Pond, LPLC. I'll be representing Taylor Bensel and Tom Brady, excuse me, the real Tom Brady.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom Brady. And this is my son-in-law, Taylor Bensel.
Perfect. And Celine Richards.
Jordan Richards.
Thank you. So with that done, now we're going to proceed to new business. And first, we have the application for Mr. Jordan and Celine Richards. Location 66 Pauline Point Road, MAP 46, lot 18. And the purpose is a shore land zone, short application. And it's the purpose with it is to remove a seasonal cabin and build a year-round, three-bedroom home. This application was considered last meeting. And it was agreed that we were going to need our opinion from the lawyer as there are different things to be considered here. And so it was agreed that Mr. Baker was going to write down a letter for the lawyers. And we will read it tonight, make sure that we all in agreement on what's being asked to a lawyer. And then next, we're going to send it out to more and more into a lawyer. So I will read out the letter. It says, Dear Mr. Sausure, this letter is related in relation to the structural replacement of a non-conforming structure. The Belgrade Planning Board is reviewing an application to permit to demolish a non-conforming water setback seasonal camp and to replace it with a larger year-round structure further from the water. Copies of the existing and proposed site plans are attached. The applicant has a handicap and has need for an attached garage, which does not currently exist. For access, the applicant has proposed to build a two-car garage attached to the rear of the new proposed home. The planning board appears to be in agreement that a garage is essential for the applicant. Thus, it is likely that the board will approve the proposed garage setback from the normal high-water line to the greatest practical extent. And overhead power lines limit any new structure from being set back further than proposed by the applicant. As mentioned previously in this letter, the applicant is proposing a larger home than the current conforming camp. The larger home as proposed is not wider than the existing camp, but is deeper, meaning longer. The planning board is struggling with the application as it applies to Section 12C6 of the Town of Belgrade Shoreland zoning ordinance. That section details with reconstruction and replacement of a non-conforming structure. Section 12C6 states that a reconstruction or replacement is in compliance with the water body setback to the greatest practical extent. It further states that if the reconstructed or replaced structure is less than the required setback, it shall not be any larger than the original, except as allow pursuant to Section 12C1 as determined by the non-conforming footprint. As determined by the non-conforming footprint. Oh my God, that's why, that's why there is Mr. Baker. Of the as determined by the non-conforming footprint of the reconstructed and replaced structure at the, yeah, at its new location. Furthermore, it states that if the total footprint of the original structure can be relocated or restructured beyond the required setback areas, no portion of the relocated or restructured structure shall be replaced or constructed unless than the setback requirement for a new structure. I hope everybody will stood up. Some of the planning board members argue that the replacement home can be constructed longer, deeper than the current camp. Others believe any proposal that requires a greater depth to their home can be, cannot be approved. In a sense, allowing a new structure that is deeper than the original structure will be equivalent to increasing non-conformity with the water setback requirements. The board will appreciate your input and guidance in on this matter. Thank you, Belgrade Planning Board. So with that said, is that a letter that you guys would agree to be sent over to our lawyers and they can get an opinion? Is there anything that you guys would like to add to the letter?
No, I was just thinking, was thinking. I can't think of anything other than the fact that one is a camp and one is going to be a home, hence almost a typically bigger than a camp. And I think that's kind of settled.
Great. So when I will proceed then, the applicant's agreement obviously to have the board vote to send this through order. With the, the only there will be a minor change, just just one little phrase being repeated there. So I will intend motion to move this forward.
Yeah, I made a motion with the, with the condition I've established the word.
So I hear a motion to, it will be later to be sent to the lawyers with a minor change that we have into it. I need a second.
I'll second it. I do have a comment or whatever. Though I read this over twice, it appears that I the oh the line in the second, third paragraph.
Yep.
The second time you see section, well, the section 12C1.
Yeah.
As determined by the, let's see, oh, as determined by the non-conforming footprint.
Yeah.
Determined by the non-conforming footprint of the but I think I have two as determined by.
Yes.
That's what I just said. That's what I, I was.
So wait.
I'm going to correct that.
We're going to correct that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So a second, so we're going to go move on to vote then.
Sarah.
What?
All right, just so that everybody knows, I'm going to recuse myself from voting since I wasn't at the last meeting. And I think it makes sense for continuity. I, I've reviewed the record and all that. But I think it makes sense in terms of continuity that I not participate in voting. Although, once we get to the meat of the application at the next meeting, I do have some comments I'm going to offer, but I'm not going to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. So I'll proceed with voting. We, we, we have five members on the floor here today. That would include Mrs. Morrell too. So Mrs., with that said, Mrs. Morrell, where did you vote?
We have Penny, was Penny here at the
Oh, that's right.
We have five of George. I'm asking, we have five of George. Have you reviewed the application significantly? So probably she could, should refuse herself in this issue as well.
Thank you. So we're going to hear Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Siccaro.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
And Miss Langgett, I vote yes, so four in favor, none opposed, and two are recused.
Wasn't I here last time?
No, I'm all for that.
So with that, we're good to send the letter out. And we hope to see you in, in two weeks, maybe.
When we get a response from the attorney, can you make sure that the Richards get a copy of that? That will, they can know about it before the meeting, what, what he said.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to see you. Are you better today?
Much better.
Good. So we move into item B in the agenda for tonight. And this is an application from Golden Pond with Doug Frame for Catherine and Taylor. You so?
Bensel.
Bensel.
So you learned that's not, sorry, sorry.
Okay. And is the location is 225 Foster Point Road, MAP 35, lot 11. And the specific location, I just went over that. And then the purpose is for a shoreland, shoreland zone application to demo a six-stable structure and install a new foundation on the same footprint. The existing source disposal system, capacity. That's blank.
The, the system is inactive. The application, the permit for a, a new stuff, it's a whole properties.
Okay.
Satisfactory.
All right. Thank you. So the present number of rooms are two and bedrooms to be added on the disapplication is zero. When did you purchase the property of the Shoreland Zone was in 7/23? That was July this year.
Yes.
And the tour area is 13,000 square feet. And the lot area within the Shoreland Zone is the same number, 13,000 square feet. The square footage of unvegetated surface with shoreland zone, including all structures, driveways, parkings, walkways, and patio is 2,520 square feet. What is the total area of clear openings of woody, woody vacation is the same amount, 2,520 square feet. Total number of structures on the lot is one. Present structure square footage is 1,008 square foot. And the proposed structure square footage is going to be the same, 1,008 square foot. With that said, I will open the door, the floor for discussion.
Would you like me to add a little bit, Sarah?
If you, if you'd like to go ahead first, sure.
Sure. So I'm leaving your packet, put a set of plans in there so that you can see the plans, what they're proposing. Would it fit in well with the surroundings and the slope? We took that into consideration. Hans and I met out there two different times, looking at what would be the best bit for that night. We came up with this, this plan, which kind of tears the building. It's not a very, very steep site there. The, the building is not in very good shape right now. And so it's slipping down the hill. Plan is to demo the building, put in a full foundation underneath it with some living space on the basement level and on the, and on the main floor. All that. Taylor, yeah, anything they'd like on this project?
Yeah. Hi, again, my name is Tom Brady. My wife and I, my wife's had her family in Pinkham, Scotia, since she was an infant. From Waltham, Mass. My wife, we have four children. And when I was 16, my wife and I started dating. That was 42 years ago. And I fell in love with the lake. And so we've, we're renting around the lake for every summer since we got married. We were married around 20. And now I have four children and they all love the lake. And I was lucky enough and fortunate enough before COVID hit and everything went crazy. In 2019, I purchased 247 Foster Point Road. Taylor was dating my daughter, married. He has two children now. And these two other cottages came available by a Mr. Bean. It was a wonderful guy and he fell in love with Taylor. So he was ready to sell and we made an offer. That's how it came to the point. So Taylor bought them. The plan with 225 is my wife has a 51-year-old completely handicapped, no speech, no nothing. She, her mother's a saint. She's been taking care of her since she was a baby. She got meningitis on Christmas Day in 73. She became completely handicapped. And she never went into a home or anything. She lives. So mom is now 80. So I don't want Karen to miss out on getting a peer to main. So the plan is we have visiting nurses and everything. We have a whole setup in Waltham, Mass. Is the basement floor would pretty much be Kristen. She's 50. And mom would be upstairs. She's 80, however. But at that point, Karen's going to take over the care. She's not going into a home. They have it pretty well set up with nurses and everything like that. But the basement, why it really needed a basement, because we have her at home, is it will be completely handicapped accessible. Now, you have to understand, we may not let you have a handicapped person, but she's completely handicapped. She can't talk. She can't move. She's dead weight. So they have these systems that you put into the roof or the ceiling. We can straddle her and she can go to a room. She can go to a changing table. She can go to the bathroom. And this is all the help of nurse. And then the mom would have the second. And the benefit of this 225, which you don't have in mind, if you went down the road, it's right on the road. And being right on the road, it can be handicapped accessible two ways. We can get her around into the, into the basement and we can have another one upstairs. She'll be downstairs most of the time. And we had her, we had her up to the camp. My camp is on a steep hill. We did get her in. It was very difficult. So the plan is, if this all works out, is Karen's mom and Kristen can come up for the summers. You know, because we all love it up here. And that way, we're right down the street, visiting nurses and, you know, whenever Karen's mother's time is, we can still get, still get Kristen. Excuse me, Kristen up here. So that's the plan with this house. And my wife and I are going to take care of the cost of that, Haley part of everything. And I'll let you tell it to your, Taylor's look, which is cute. We'll get to that. So that's kind of where we're at with this, why we wanted to do this. Again, very happy with my house here. This is just for Karen, six to Kristen, because I foresee that this is where we're going. And I want her with us so we don't lose kind of the name.
Well, thank you for sharing all that.
I just think you need to know the background.
Yes.
Who we are. We're not just some, we've been coming up here forever. I come up here year-round. I leave work usually early on Friday to get up here to spend the weekend. Yeah. But we just love Belgrade and we love the community. And again, my wife and her family have been coming up here for years.
Perfect. Thank you for sharing all that. Um, so it makes a lot of sense now. Any?
I did a couple of questions. I note that the, it says square footage of unvegetated surface within a shoreline zone, including all obstructive driveway, parking, walkway is 2,500 square, 20 by 20. And it's also the cleared opening area. Is there no vegetation in the cleared opening?
There, there was vegetation in the clear.
Okay, so those numbers don't quite jive, I guess, if the, say, in the same number of unvegetated surface is the same number as the cleared opening. Just, to me, doesn't make.
Can you run through that for me?
Yeah.
So just how that, that works, because I've had different, I've been given different opinions about how that's calculated.
The square footage of unvegetated surface consists of, I want to read this directly, the house, the driveway, sidewalks, whatever, that are not vegetated.
Right. And that, that, that number is the 2520.
Okay. And then the cleared opening is the area that is devoid of trees. In other words, if you've got a typical lot and you're building it for the first time, you're going to have, you know, a hundred-foot buffer, and then you're going to make a cleared opening with your new house. And that's, it's basically the area that is not covered by the leaf line of trees. If, if in fact there are trees there, so.
There's a lot of trees.
Yeah.
It's not far off from that.
The, yeah. And the reason for that is you can only have a certain amount of cleared open.
Right.
Forty percent. So.
But you're not tall that the trees need to be.
Pardon me?
How tall the, the trees need to be to be classified as?
Well, it, it actually, I use the term trees as woody vegetation. If, if all there are shrubs on the lot or woody type shrubs, you can clear 40% of that area.
It is all woody shrub.
It's all woody shrub.
It's a, actually, it's a resource-protected slope. So this is what it is.
So it's like 480 square feet of vegetation essentially. It's just the 13,000 total lot area, 2,520 of unclear.
They've just got stone steps going down to the lake, so they're not a clear gap.
It, it's, it's not going to exceed the lot coverage.
Oh, no, not anywhere close.
Okay. The other thing I, I note, and it may relate to the issue that you raised. And we, as I see it, it looks like the structure is setback. Oh, 70, 60 or I was thinking 70s.
Yeah, 70s.
Okay.
I, I measured, I measured 72. But when, when you put the, the building on the plan and tweak it based on the angle, because the back left corner is 11 feet off the road and drop your line and the others on 14, it calculated at 76. And of course, there's some wiggle room to where you measure that from, on the, on the chore front. I mean, there's pretty jagged there. I mean, 72 is a very.
Basically, it's closest point of the structure to the corporate's high-water line.
Yeah. And that, that's what I measured at 72, but I calculated at 76.
Yeah, well, I guess my thinking, if you actually measured it from the shoreline, you really need to take that measurement, not, not based on, you know, it's a physical measurement that you need to be, that we need to, excuse me, know that. And the reason I asked the question, I initially thought it was 16 feet. But even if it's 72 feet, you can only be 25 feet in height. And I don't know the height of the structure.
Where, that, that's one of the reasons that Hans and I met out there is to make sure that, as it slopes, that we kept it under that.
And that's measured from the downhill side.
That's correct.
Mean original grade across the front.
That's correct. We had another first go-around of a plan that had, that didn't have that weird look. So we changed it to, all right, this look, then say under that height restriction.
The other question I have is, I didn't plan to be here tonight. I thought I was going to be away. So I didn't have a chance to thoroughly review the package. On the uphill side, it appears that there, is that a, a, I want to say the uphill side, but looking at the photo with the stairway in the front, so like a steps going up to the door. Is that the portion that facing a wave on the lake or?
That's the side.
That's the side.
Yeah, that's where the driveway is.
And the structure that I see sticking out the corner in that same photo, is that a, is that toward the water or?
No, that's the side. I, you might try to bring the, the plan over and show you what's going on. Can I probably, this is the side entrance.
Okay, yeah.
The situation inside, and you can stay in the same location. This is the edge of property point. This corner is 11 feet off. This corner is 14 feet off.
And what is, is this?
4x40.
Okay. Is there, is there a deck or something of sorts other than?
No, it's, it's, it's within the structure. So right now, right now, they have a porch. There's a, there's a covered porch. And we're just taking, taking that and making a deck and keeping the same.
Okay, same.
There's no, not one extra structure on this.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you want to see that?
Yeah. We're in the same footprint out here. So I hear that the height of the structure is less than 25, or 25?
I'm sorry.
The height of the structure?
Yes.
Is correct. Mr. Seal, any questions?
Yeah, unfortunately, the audio isn't real great, but a couple of questions. I, one is for the, actually for the board is the, the, the site plan that was provided to us. And that is on the, by email by Hans and also that's on the town website. In the last page of our packet, does not meet the requirements of the ordinance. But I, my question is, does the full-scale plan that was, that was, is being circulated at the meeting differ from that? And does it meet the requirements of Section 16 of the ordinance? And just so we're all on the same page, the, the hand-sketch site plan in our packet, I say, I, I say that it doesn't meet the ordinance because there's much, much of the information is missing. And I'll just read it for everybody's benefit. The, every applicant for a permit shall submit a written application, including a two-scale site plan on a form provided by the municipality to the appropriate official, blah, blah, blah. The site plan shall include at minimum the location of the existing and proposed structures, roads, driveways, walkways, that's not provided, wastewater disposal systems, that's not provided, drinking water well, that's not provided, water lines, that's not provided, power lines, that's not provided, right, right-of-ways, if any, stormwater runoff control measures, property lines, all that, property lines are there. Drainage ways and intermittent streams, vegetated areas, and the normal high-water mark of the pond. So on my question is, do we have an adequate site plan? Because what, what, what's in our packet here doesn't cut it.
Page two, everybody. George, there is an updated site plan provided. It's a smaller scale of what Doug just circulated.
Okay, great. That's excellent. And and that shows that, and like the smaller plan, that the distance from the proposed house location is 14 feet from the road.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the again, another question for the board, and maybe this has been provided and I, and it, and I don't have it because I'm not physically present at the meeting. But the, I, I know the owners are, are right there and present, and maybe this makes it moot. But the, again, what we were provided the, again, what we were provided in our pa- board packet doesn't include a letter of authorization for, uh, Mr. Fram to act as the representative for the owners.
That's been provided.
Okay, great.
There's email, yeah.
And, uh, and lastly, I just want to again verify, again, because the audio wasn't real terrific, um, the, the distance to the normal high water line, the closest distance from the proposed location of the, of the, uh, replacement home, is it, it, I understood the people to say, or Mr. Fram, for you to say, that it's measured at seventy-two feet, but, um, somewhere, I don't know if it was from a survey drawing, you got, uh, uh, seventy-six feet. I, I'm just wondering which it is and what you and, uh, Hans verified when you, or redid those measurements.
Um, I think the most accurate way is the way George did it is by, uh, deductions because the slope, I, I don't have the right surveying gear to measure seventy-six feet distance at a thirty-foot drop. So that would all be kind of guessing. Um, the location of the structure is not gonna move. It's gonna go exactly where it was. So it's not moving forward, backwards, it's not expanding.
Yeah, but as Rich noted earlier, it makes a big difference in terms of what the maximum structure height is allowed. If it's, if it's less than seventy-five feet, um, and it's proposed at twen- uh, what, twenty-four, uh, twenty-five feet, six inches, according to the profile drawings that were submitted.
And that's the existing height?
That's the existing height?
Yeah.
Of the current structure.
Yes, it is.
I, I would have never guessed that from the photos.
But not on the backside. But if you look, if you look.
One-story building.
Yeah, that's, but if you look at the po- at the point where, if you're looking at the old pictures, um, the peak of the roof above the existing hip porch roof.
Well, part of the problem is, at least in my packet, I don't have any photos other than what were provided, uh, by Quimby Septic. So, you know, that's another deficiency in the application, but, um, the, uh, the front of the, uh, cottage looks to be level with the ground, uh, according to the photos that I have.
That's the street.
On the side.
That would be the street side.
Photos?
Excellent.
That, that side that you're talking about, Mr. Seal, is a street side.
It, the, in terms of the photos, yeah, the only photos provided were provided by, a- as part of the, uh, inspection of the, uh, wastewater uh, treatment system, the subsurface wastewater treatment system. And it shows it to be a one-story home, not a two-story home. That's why I questioned that what, the, that, uh, it's, um, already twenty-five feet tall.
It's, uh,
It's a slope, right, Fred?
Yeah.
Slope in the back.
It, it looks too, like two-story, but it is, so I understand it's gonna be a basement there.
Correct, it has a basement.
The, 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 the property slopes, you said thirty feet down, and so, so they're, so they're measuring from the lowest point. So the pictures, you know, don't tell the whole story from how, what I'm digging, because the, the, the property drops off considerably and then measure them from the lowest point in the backside of the property to get the height of the, the house, I guess.
So it has an open, uh, open basement?
Okay.
Yes. It goes up.
Down slope?
No.
There's face underneath there, but it, there's no foundation there, there's, there's posts.
So that the height of the existing structure was that, uh, uh, we're kind of in the same boat as George, I'm, uh, thinking that if, if there's a basement being added to it and it's, it's kind of almost like a walkout basement type thing. Um, the height of the original structure would be measured from the peak of the roof to the, the water side, downhill side, at the main original grade, which we essentially could soak one foot from one side to the other, you've got a six-inch main original grade, you measure to that point to the roof.
Hmm.
Um, and the basement or the new addition, that also would be measured from that same location. Uh, the, the bottom, the, essentially where the basement meets the ground on the downhill side. And if it's within seventy-five feet of the water, that last three feet can't be higher than twenty. If.
We're at about ten. Can I, can I show you a drawing? So the, the turn, the turnhouse had a hit, uh, porch here above this open dam, so we've actually decreased the height from either spurt, from here back eight feet, and then at this point here, which is the peak of the roof at the highest point here, that will be under twenty-five feet.
But that's, that's also measured from this distance. The, it's, this, this is the height of the structure where the main original grade on the downhill side, the highest point of the structure is the height of the structure. It's, it's not measured.
That's not, that's not the way I interpreted it. Is that the way you would interpret? That's why we geared it back.
I'd, I'd say back at that far, it can be twenty-five feet high because it's more than seventy-five feet from the water. But the structure as a whole is looked at as the whole structure and that structure from its roof to the, uh, down front part of it, I mean, where it meets the ground, you would draw a line parallel to the roof line over to where it hits the ground and measure up, and that will be your distance, your height of the structure.
I hear what you're saying, I'm not sure I agree with that.
Yeah, I'm I don't think we've done that in the past.
Actually, we ha- actually, we have and we've got guidance to that, uh, uh, specifying that exactly from D E P, uh, when we've gone through this in the past, also on Great Pond on the opposite side of Pinkham Cove.
And we just, if I understand what you're saying correctly, because I'm, I didn't see the drawing, but as you go back and you go from the fifty-foot line to the seventy-five foot long, you can go higher.
Right.
It can go five feet higher.
Your house up. But you still measure from the downhill side when you do that.
Because the front, where it would be seventy, in front of, or closer than seventy-five feet is gonna be the deck.
Right, and that may very well, that does not exceed the height limitation, but the part that's, the house itself, you would draw that, here's, say, the deck is here and the height of the structure is here, the height of the struc- of, of the top of it, the peak of the roof, even though that's back here, you would draw a line parallel to the
Carry that same elevation.
Same elevation, and then measure to the downhill side, front of the downhill side, which would be the deck.
Doesn't matter if that, that point is beyond the seventy-five.
The grade is, it's coming up, so.
So it's, it's, well, the, the height of the structure.
Um.
Is it the same as the existing?
No, it's got a, it's a steeper pitch on the, the current one, yeah, that, this, this.
The, uh, definition, I can read it, is the vertical distance between the main original gr- grade at the downhill side of the structure and the highest point of the structure. The deck and house are all these structure. So the, the height is mentioned, it doesn't matter whether, if it's all one structure, it could be back a hundred feet from the water and if you're measuring the building height, you, again, go extend the line of the, the highest, uh.
But that, that deck is that, that the, the, let's call it the southernmost point, the water side of the deck, that, that is extended beyond seventy-five feet, correct?
That's, that's the current part of the existing structure.
Right, but you're not building any closer to the water with that. So that deck would be beyond seventy-five feet from the water.
That's correct.
Right, so it doesn't, that doesn't apply then.
Seventy-six is correct.
Yeah.
Correct, none of the.
Right. Richard, if, if the deck is beyond seventy, the southernmost, the water side point, the, the, the deck is beyond seventy-five feet, you're building a plot. The, this, this, this is showing seventy-six, four and a quarter.
Yeah, but it's, it's actually, measure wise, is seventy-two.
Well, that's not what this shows, this.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's like, it keeps sloping, so maybe it's we need to get a more better established measurement to see if we are within or outside of seventy-five.
If, if this thing could be looked at, and I don't know whether I'm going too far here, but perhaps a site visit.
A site visit will help out, yeah.
And we'd get a, a, a good idea of what the site looks like and, uh, but, uh, Nick is right, if it, if it were seventy-six feet back,
Hmm.
we would be talking about the building height couldn't be more than twenty-five.
Hmm.
But, uh, well, and, and I, I, it may be that, if it is, say, that the front of the structure is it really, the, the, the big issue to me is whether the structure is more than twenty-five feet high based on the definition, measuring from the front of the deck and at the ground level to the peak. If that's higher than twenty-five feet, uh, within seventy-five feet, that can't happen.
Right, I was just, I, I, I was just going off the prince and, and the prince is saying seventy-six, four and a quarter, then they would, they would be safe. If the, if, you know, if, if the deck doesn't be, get any closer to the water.
Well, I agree that the, the deck is, is not.
The property is a hundred and thirty, twenty, by the, your property, your property is a hundred and thirty.
This one's a rectangle, complete rectangle.
The property.
Yeah.
Right, I'm saying from, from, from the road to the water is a hundred and thirty, correct?
Yeah.
So if we do some math and we deduct, you know, you know, how from fourteen feet where your property starts and we, we could.
I, I honestly think this is more accurate than my measurement because from pulling from the road, I mean, who knows where the high water mark is.
Right, but I'm saying if we can.
It's established that.
Yeah.
Uh, unless you cannot physically, well, put it this way, typically what we did when we measured normal high water line is that we would find the normal high water line, which can be determined based on whether it's the coloration on the rocks, the shoreline activity of, action of, of the water, uh, is that we would measure in increments, uh, you, you know, where you, if you don't have an instrument, you could do it by lifting the tape up above that normal high water line, coming back, even if that's just twenty feet or ten feet, and then doing the same thing again, so you're doing it in tiers.
In tiers, yeah.
To get that, yes.
The best, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's just basic protocol when you're doing forest surveying, uh, there's nothing magical about it.
Um, uh, so I hear that, Tony, we should do a site visit to, uh, confirm that.
I would, I would recommend that we look at this.
Okay.
I, I have a question, when we get out there, who's going to do the measurement, you're talking about?
All you have to do is shoot, shoot a laser, go to the auto, you know, shoot a laser and you can, you know, that, that can, shoot a laser vertical, go to the point and you can get a fairly accurate measure. Because we're talking close, we're talking a couple of feet here.
Yeah.
That means this, yeah.
Who's got that kind of equipment?
Well, there's a problem, just, just any laser shoots, shoots straight up.
We got one?
Plum, yeah, we got lasers.
Okay.
And then, and the deck, and the, the current cottage you can measure off of the current because it's the same footprint, so you would shoot up, you find where the meat, where the water point is, you would shoot up a laser vertical and then, and then we can pull off of that.
Hmm.
I mean, they have laser pointers, like we don't, you know, you could hold up, you know, something up plum or, you know, get a, a level, hold it up plum and shoot, you know, they have laser that can get fairly accurate with it, you're out.
Yeah.
If it's close, you might have to do some eyes, you know, get some.
Oh, and sure that we have the tape measure. We'll look at this.
I, I would just remind the board that the, the burden of proof here is on the applicant, is always on the applicant, and so we shouldn't feel compelled to do the measurement for them.
So, I got a question now, so we have the, uh, the applicant who do the measurement. The applicant, do you have access to, uh, laser equipment?
I do. I mean, I, I feel like working back from the road is probably the most accurate way to do this.
All right, that's what I was saying, if, if, if you, if you, if your property is a hundred and thirty feet, if that's what you own and if you measure off the road to the back of the current property, which is where the new structure is going to be, you would just deduct that measurement from a hundred and thirty.
Okay, at the same time, it might be a hundred feet on the sideline, uh, legally, but the sideline measurement, well, two things, one, that the distance isn't measured from any normal high water line, uh, I'm not sure what they measure from, from a, a survey or a reality point of view or tax point of view, but it could be a hundred feet on the shoreline, the shoreline could come in two feet in front of the structure from that distance of the sideline. That measurement then setback or whatever is two foot less than it is at the same, uh, you know, two feet more inland than.
Yeah, you're saying where the land, the land jogs in.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we can do it both ways. The, the, the applicant going to do it from, according to law, from the, uh, uh, eyes point, you know, along the shoreline, and we want to move from back from the back, you could do it that way, you could do it both ways.
Or, uh, well, we can do that, but the thing, the audience says they have to be for the highest mark on the lit, on the lit.
Water.
Water. So we have to go by that definition.
Right. Uh, you know, you, you just for, to get a better understanding of the property line, you may want to consider going from the back as well, you know. I don't know, like, I know it's a problem.
So, um, I'm hearing then that we should probably do a site visit and, uh, resolve that.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, so then it will be, uh, let's open our calendars here, what time, what, what, what day will work for you guys?
Yeah, we're not taking measurements, we're not gonna go there and take measurements, just.
But, um, okay, uh.
Ask Richard, what's the purpose of the site visit?
Pardon me? Because we're not gonna go there and take measurements, that's how it's with, you know.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, although, uh.
I, I, I personally would like to go and see with this team and all that, it's, uh, um, uh, it's, it's hard to picture in the pictures
Yeah.
um, how this, uh, is, is located and so on and.
And, you know, I kind of got a kind of a feeling that even though we won't be measuring a legal measurement, so to speak, but I'd like to get a feel by checking and whether I'm correct or not, but I'd like to feel for what I think the setback is. Current.
Um, these, these pictures are much more clear than I'm having the in this package.
Yeah, so the lake is on the right hand side, look in the pictures, yeah, and hopefully it's possible, it's steep down, you know, so we're gonna have to.
What do you estimate the elevation from the lake, fifty, sixty?
No, I don't think, at, at the base, at the foundation.
From the water to, yeah.
I'd say from the
Or driveway.
From the lake elevation to the driveway, I'd say probably thirty-five, forty. Yeah. Yeah, from the, from the road to the lake, I'd probably say thirty-five, somewhere in there. It's very steep.
Well, maybe, maybe the answer is that, uh, we need, well, we certainly recommend a, a if it, if it's so difficult to measure, it has to be measured by the normal high water, not the back of the property.
Hmm.
Because the setback. Because the setback. Yeah, you know, it the. The normal high water line is where we measure from.
Right, the normal water line to the back of the property.
Will the front of the structure. Uh, we need to make sure that that is seventy-five. And uh if it isn't. And. The. What we're what we're what we need to figure out is at twenty-five feet from, I mean. Uh seventy-five feet is the structure more than twenty feet, five feet tall. Based on the definition.
Not at not at seventy-five feet.
When 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 was this house built, the current structure? Eighteen fifty-six.
So you guys understand the lemmas, the the beginning of the building is right in this. Defining sum. So, um, um.
Why why is that? Do you know what the reasoning is behind that? Why it's determined that way?
It's the the elevation in the show my zoning orders is. Is the 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 limitation on height is basically a visual or aesthetic.
I agree.
And if. If you're looking at the structure from the where it hits the ground. And so when we're measuring up, it doesn't matter whether the back of the structure is. Real high or the front of the structure is real high, from the water, you're seeing the same thing.
But what we're proposing is actually more aesthetically pleasing and lower than what is currently there. Because we're taking, we're taking the porch off. We're taking that first eight feet off, that's actually twelve feet high, higher than what we're proposing. So that's why I asked what the intention, because I I that's what I thought.
But from from the water, you're still seeing the whole structure in front. Doesn't matter whether it's five, six feet in front of it.
But yeah, you'll you'll see, you'll see when you get there. I mean, when if you look at it, you're on the downhill side, you look at what's there now, what we're proposing, it's a drastic improvement. Based on what you're saying, the intent of that rule is. So it it it's a, I think it'll be quite easy once you, once you see it.
But why don't we, I propose that we have a site visit. Uh, to. Basically get a, the main purpose is to get a feel or an understanding. Of the height of the structure as it appears, as it applies to uh distances from the water.
All right, so we're going to vote on that? Penny? Mr. Baker?
Yes.
This is a car?
Yes.
It's a surgeon.
George, is George, I was gonna say, George is actually part of this hearing. So Penny may not be able.
I I actually, I I still have two more questions for Hans. Their housekeeping and in minor and matter, but we should get them cleared up um. Before uh going a further, um, first off, Hans, do you have for the uh. For as part of the uh application in the project file, a copy of the revised site drawing now?
I did.
Okay, and had on the original application, has the name of the uh applicant been corrected?
No.
Be kind of cool if we gave a permit to the right people.
Uh Taylor owns the property.
So I didn't hear your answer.
It's it's Benzel.
Benzel.
And not Brady?
They did spell it right.
B E M, would you say Z?
Yeah, that's right.
I'm confused now. Taylor.
George, I wrote the usual, it is Benzel, so I mistook the N for U. The application is correct.
Thank you.
So any more questions? Or discussion before we go to vote? So, Mr. Seal, we're gonna have you vote first again.
Right, yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
This is the car?
Yes.
It's a surgeon. And we say wrong, yes, so uh five in favor, in favor, none opposed. And we, what we have to determine then is when we're gonna do the side visit. Um, it's over our account. You guys want to do it next week? So next week, um. Um, Monday is the holiday. Um, I'm not available Monday or Tuesday. So, um. People available Wednesday and Thursday?
Okay, those dates are, what was the number of days?
So it's Wednesday is eleven and uh Thursday is twelve.
I think I'm.
What time? Five is good?
What, yeah, whatever works for you.
Okay. Peter?
I'm fine.
You're fine any day, any other two day. Okay, Wed- Wednesday it is then. Oh, wait a second, wait a second, let's do it Thursday. I'm sorry. Thurs- Thursday the twelve at five P M. And, uh, the place is, uh. Twenty-two, twenty-five, Gloucester Point. That's a being on cold, it's beautiful there.
By the border, twelve?
Yeah. Excellent, so we got that down. So, uh, now we're moving to the next application, that is also with the Walden Pond.
And one quick question, the twenty-five, uh, drop this point road, that uh is easy to sign, easy to let.
I'll be there.
What do you drive?
Big white truck that says Golden Pond.
Uh, this picture is ours. And we put in with application. So, um, we move into item C. And the applicant is going on without frame for Catherine and Taylor Benzel. All right, and the location is Chutok Road, map thirty-five, lot lot twelve. And the purpose is a shoreline zone to remove dock on water edge and install deck. On house, move bedroom to lower level and add a bathroom. All right, uh, the common property is a residential. Uh, uh, property, uh, proposed construction. Uh, we already went over that, is it's uh removing a permanent dock on the water edge and installed a. Install a deck on the house and move a bedroom to a lower level and a bathroom, um. X sixteen. A source disposal system and capacity. Uh, we said that it is.
The tank on this property is fine, it'd be still is uh.
Okay. Okay, and the number of bedrooms is two and bedrooms to be added, uh, this application is zero. Uh, this property was also purchased in July of two thousand and three. I mean, uh, twenty twenty-three. And, um, the total lot area is twelve thousand four hundred square feet. Um. And the lot area within the shore, so shoreline zone is twelve thousand four hundred square feet. The square footage on their, of on ventilated surface with shoreline zone, including all structures, driveways, parking. Walkways and parties is two thousand three hundred and forty square feet. Same number is for the total area of clear opening of wooded renovation. The total number of structures on the lot is one. Uh, persons, a structure square footage is nine hundred and ninety-two square feet. And the proposed structure square footage is. I will say nine hundred and ninety-two square feet as well. With that, I will open the floor for discussion.
All right, pass some photos around, it'll make me helpful.
Sure.
I have a quick question, where's Cove Road?
It's right down the hill, they're they're adjacent properties, the driveway kind of just scoots down from. Yeah.
Shop, right?
Yeah. They're they're adjacent properties.
You guys will appreciate these pictures. Foundation.
Standing there.
But isn't from the side?
This this is taken from the driveway and leaves from.
Yeah, the the back, the back side.
Yeah, this is the backside, correct? That's the permanent dock on the water, this section here. And there's another section, it's concrete underneath it. This this is the, so. Foster Point is up here, this is Foster Point Road, and this little road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know why they call it that, but it's it's really driveway, it just comes down, there's another neighbor here that hasn't shared.
And this being removed as well.
So the plan is to take both of these structures, remove them. In exchange for this deck here, so this square footage is the same, oh, this square footage is. Half a square foot less than those two structures there. And there's no change. Correct.
What your plans to do here will they will remove, uh. When they remove the dock. Yeah, is that gonna be, is planned to revegetate that?
I think it would be some type of vegetation there.
I think it would be required.
Yeah, major approval.
Uh, concrete steps saying, are you taking one of that? The building. This is not that care.
That's right, that's under. It goes the whole way to go up.
Is there a currently? Well, actually, you're not proposing to change the building at all. Are you're not adding, what you say, the thing said you're gonna bring the bathroom downstairs?
There's a, there's a basement in this already, and so we're gonna move, uh, a bedroom, there's two bedrooms on the first floor, we're gonna move.
As long as it's, in my opinion, as long as you're meeting the plumbing code, whatever you're doing there.
Which we are.
Uh, it really is not an issue to us what you do inside the building.
Right.
I have a question for the board or 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 for Mr. Frame, uh. I obviously am at a disadvantage since I don't have the revised site plan, I I just have what was submitted previously. But, um. According to it, the front of the uh proposed porch. Is gonna be forty-two and a half feet from the uh normal high water line. And. And I'm just wondering if that's changed uh on the on the revised uh site plan.
There way we can send in that site plan? Or did he receive?
Um. He's, it's in his packet here.
The new one? Oh.
Um, yeah, I could go email it real quick.
And where I'm where I'm heading with all this is, of course, is the same issue that came up in the last application, uh. Because, again, based on what's in our board packet, not what you have in front of you. Um, the uh distance, uh. At, um, the the maximum uh structure height proposed at. Fifty feet uh from the lake is twenty-five feet high, and the ordinance only allows twenty feet at fifty feet.
We're we're not changing, we're not changing anything. We're not, we're not moving this building. The height, the height is staying the same.
So the the current structure's twenty-five feet is is Rich explained how the proper way to measure that. Under the last application?
Yes.
George, I've got a question of you in in terms of what you're asking, uh. If the, the, well, first I'll ask the applicant, the deck is, uh. Is that on the first floor, is that essentially the same height walking out of the first floor?
Right.
And the. I guess I'm just, uh, thinking, are you talking, George, about? The the height measured from the bottom of the new deck. Up to the bigger the structure?
Yes.
In other words, they're coming out, uh, whatever the width of that deck is, uh. Seven and a half feet. Is that seven and a half feet causing the structure to become higher?
Yeah, uh, I was basing it on the, uh. On the front of the deck. Or porch or whatever that is. From the elevation, from the base of that to the peak.
Things coming up with the with the first level, yeah. So that wouldn't change.
We're not, we're not changing, we're not changing the roof. Yeah, we're we're not gonna change this roof at all.
Yeah, George, these you can see a lot better. So you, what you're saying is if you measured from this post. Bottom of the post, up to the roof, but or from here to here.
That's that's on the water side, correct?
That's correct, this is facing the water.
Yeah, so the higher the the structure when this gets done is this distance. Well, assuming this is the level. Uh, which is the lowest point of the structure, which is the lowest point of the depth.
But we're not changing, we're not changing that. We're not, we're not planning to increase anything.
So your structure is not being touched at all outside?
We're gonna make it look better, but we're not putting a different roof on it. With the other, with the other application, we went from a six-twelve pitch to a ten-twelve pitch, so it made it a. With the other, with the other application, we went from a six-twelve pitch to a ten-twelve pitch, so it made it a little bit steeper. But this, this roof is actually a very good roof on it. Uh, building had some issues with the roof, but not one of them, kind of like, no, we found it. But there's no, there's no change to that.
George, you should have those. Attachments in your email.
George, uh, Mr. Ammuzin, uh, sent an email to you with a updated packet.
This, this measure from there, use that. Uh, that you're talking about, that may be close or over the twenty-five.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's, but it's existing. It's not like they're gonna. If this is not. They're down to do that.
Mr. Frame, uh, George Seal, um, I may have gotten the wrong end of the stick on what you're proposing or, or what the drawings that you submitted from, uh, where Butler represent, uh, the profile drawings, those are of the existing structure, not the proposed, uh, other than the porch?
Right.
So the porch, the porch is key now.
The deck, the deck, the deck is, the deck is an exchange.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, deck, excuse me.
It's an ex, it's an exchange for the permanent structure. Moving there.
I'm watching every surface.
I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't call it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd say it's improved.
And, and it's a decrease by half a square.
'Cause according to the profile drawing, uh, the one on page seven, um, you know, the existing height is twenty-five feet. From the base of the, uh, um, well, regardless of where you measured, uh, measured from, but from ground level to the peak is twenty-five feet, according to that drawing.
Mm-hmm, that's, that's existing. That's, that's not a change, that's not anything we're planning on changing.
Another question for the board or, or for Hans, or, well, for anybody really, um, and again, I'm at a disadvantage because the site plan I have doesn't show, uh, the dock. The permanent dock that's supposed to be removed at all, so, um, I take it the revised site plan shows it, it's, not only its location, but its dimensions?
Yeah, and George, I believe that Hans, um, sent, sent you the correct one on your email. You should have it now.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
Looking at the underside of the existing dock, permanent dock. It, would, in your opinion, is that above or below the, the front edge? Does that extend over the nor, normal high water?
Absolutely. I think my, my, my calculation was our, yeah, my, my calculation.
It was Dr. Della looking at the under pinnings.
The slab, it, it's really hard to tell even crawling underneath there, the slab. Kind of hangs over the edge of the water.
That sand underneath that?
Un- underneath the slab?
No, underneath the, uh, the, uh, dock. Looks like same as picture of sand, but I think it's more muck and, oh, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's just black, I'm like.
Yeah, yeah. I think, there, there's a better color on there.
Yeah, yeah, that, is that sand?
Looks like sand.
Yeah.
Uh, this is the slab.
Oh, that's.
That's the slab, which, which hang.
I thought this was the slab, yeah.
No, yeah, that, that issue is broken. It's broken.
Yeah, okay.
So this, this, the slab side here going the whole way is cracked. Probably hit five or six.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I thought that was slab there. I thought that was sand.
No, that's concrete as well.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, that's nice, well.
Would be, uh, I don't know, will that, I think somehow address, uh, and I don't know how far to go with it. Uh, if that were being removed in exchange for putting it on the front of the structure, that, some wording be that this area, um, you know, I guess, I was gonna say vegetated, and at the same time, we have this cement slab there. Uh, I'm not sure if we can require that slab to be removed, but.
We plan, we plan to remove.
Okay, ideally it'd be removed and, and vegetated with.
Red, with red.
Vegetation that would cure the, the bank.
Absolutely.
Well, the only issue that I have in my own mind is whether or not adding that deck increases the height of the structure from the downhill side. At the same time, I understand that the deck is a, not entirely, but what you call it, almost two-dimensional, uh, in terms of. Where? Versus a porch or whatever. But same time, we can't treat this different than we're treating the other side. Yeah, we've gotta go by the definition. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't, isn't this different because it's an existing dock performing and we're not changing the roof?
Well, that's, that's the, the point that I'm sitting here struggling with is the structure, main structure itself is not being changed.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I was thinking of the floater.
It's, it's changing based on the height definition, but it, at the same time, it, it's, it's not an isolate, if you will. It's, it's.
And it's structural, it's not really usable, uh, living space.
No, 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 that, that's not issue.
I think I understand what you're saying, you're saying to the, the, the posts, when they come down, wherever they meet the ground, from the bottom of that post up to the top of the roof, is that now higher because you extended the deck maybe on a pitch, on a pitch?
Yeah.
I mean, but, you know, for the, I look at that as structural, it's not really usable. If that, if that, that went out like on the lowest point, went out further.
Yeah.
But where, where they're gonna be using the deck up at the same level as what it.
There is a, just sort of, uh, to add that, uh, Richard, there is a little flat area outside the daylight section. And so we could conceivably move those posts back.
I mean, you could one flat.
Yeah, we could, we could move that back and.
Not increasing the height from the, the base.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Uh, yeah, we, you know, my, I think we need to be consistent. Your first application, where arguably can approve it or if it's, you know, within seventy-five feet or it's bringing up more than twenty-five feet in height, based on the front of the, the new porch, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
And here we've got somewhat the same thing. We've got a deck with posts coming down, and that's part of the structure.
Mm-hmm.
So you're measuring from the downhill side of the structure to the peak.
Yeah.
And, and, and we, and I think we've had this situation before with another application, and we, we told them we have to consider the, uh, front edge of the post on the deck. I specifically remember an application like that. And my thought here is if you could do that, uh, that would take the issue away.
Yeah, that's, that's very reasonable.
Yeah.
Annually.
Yeah, and it's only, it's realistically, it's probably only a foot and a half annually, I think, I think it's about six to seven feet. We walk out there and work, the deck's only seven-six.
Yeah, yeah, if you could do that.
What you can do with that when you begin it.
Yeah, so instead of putting the post at the end of the deck, you're gonna just move them in and you're gonna cantilever the other side.
From a construction standpoint, it would be a lot easier working on the slab anyway.
Right. Good.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I mean, I think it's a different from the other one because everyone is little, little space in the walkout basement that we're measuring from. That's the lowest point and like, this is like a structural, you know, this is just structural, but yeah, I think you can leave it. That would take care of all, all your questions.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you, it's not a terrible thing.
Right.
And compared to the, the top that's being moved to that, but at the same time, what we see as being better versus not better isn't what we can vote on is what, not this, what the ordinance says, so. Yeah, in bringing it back, so this on the flat surface will take care of the problem.
Excellent.
Uh, and I think we'd have to have that somehow shown on the application, uh, whether that's a.
I can, we can, we can redraw the floor plan and the elevations and move that back and show the view that I can submit it to.
Yeah, structural, the structural, yeah, yeah.
People wear Butler are very good.
They have a good dressing.
So I hear that, um, here personally, we're, I guess we're in agreement and in good status to, you know, move forward. Mr. Se, uh, Seal, you have anything to add, questions?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm fine with this application, given the clarifications and revisions.
Excellent. So, um, sounds like it probably we can, uh, consider the application complete. And we can move to the findings of facts. And conclusion of law.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have to.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We're, I only.
I keep getting mixed up as to what comes first.
Yeah.
You're the chairman, you know what you're doing.
Right.
I'm gonna vote on it as complete, but.
No, we just, we just need a complete, but the, the commercial obligations that you have, we have to vote for that, but not here.
I was gonna make.
Is that right, George?
I'm sorry, would you ask me?
We don't have to vote that the application is complete.
Uh, well, I think so. I mean, with shoreline zoning, when they didn't like the commercial development review ordinance or, or the subdivision ordinance, where we have to make a finding that it's, and have a form for doing so, uh, for it being complete, but I believe, believe on what I've heard that it's complete.
It's complete. We just need a complete, we don't have to vote on it.
No.
All right. So.
Nothing in the ordinance that requires us to do so.
Good. So that said, uh, we're gonna go to the finding of our facts and conclusion of law. And this is gonna take, uh, about ten to fifteen minutes. It's kind of tedious. All right, I gotta do this. So I'll tell you that one. So, um, Hans is, I think, is printing that out. Um.
Kids are already asleep.
Just bear with us for a little bit. You know, it's, it's a good time to take your ladder, right here. I mean, we'll be right back.
Forty-five, they got the ball running. I'm, it's still early.
Yeah. Is, is that what you're gonna find, you're gonna see if you can find a bad, or if all actions, whatever. I would say maybe it's probably. Making the decision.
We used to always, uh, just get through this. If the condition, the situation, you know, that's what. After they made a motion, somebody said that now. I'm gonna tell, we, we. Based on the standards of the ordinance. It'll take fifteen minutes if we know what, when, you know, reality is everybody is in agreement. Um, if somebody, yeah, they're out of the trailer, we reviewed the, um, clearing standards. Setback. So. What makes our means go on. Again. Yeah, but we have to do it according to the board. We don't determine things, that's the way you need to do it.
We'll go with that.
Yes, well, I will say everything you'll say to them, Sarah. The ordinance will not, uh, call that, you'll hear.
See, it says.
You gotta down pat maybe.
Finding of facts, conclusions.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
That's great.
She's.
Sarah's been on the training board for now, like, no good four years. Only Karen went for the thick part of the year in Ireland.
You have a form that you have, so you're always starting to get all the qualifications for the finding.
Uh, yes, we do.
Yeah.
And, and make this process so slick.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, when you go to the training.
Yeah.
The lawyers doing the training from the MMA, uh, they will, uh, mention the planning board boundary. Or this, just for this floor. It's, it's a very one.
I noticed that they still was, was mentioned in here too, when they had an issue.
All right.
Yeah, so, uh, we're famous in this domain for sure. So, um, that said, we'll move on with the findings of facts and conclusions of law. Uh, applicant name again, Taylor Catherine Benson, let's correct here the spelling. Uh, applicant address is two Toke Road, map thirty-five, lot twelve. So we're gonna start with the findings of facts. The applicant on the day applied for the shoreline permit for good building X sixteen. Uh, where is it in here?
Toke Road.
Yeah, it is, is the, uh, right address, but, uh, is, uh, the, the, uh, purpose got swapped, I think. I'm sorry about that. We'll be right back.
Map and lot.
Uh, the map and lot is correct. But the purpose of it, it will be to remove dock from water edge and to install deck house, move bedroom to a lower and a lower, uh, lower, lower level and add bathroom. So I'm gonna, um.
I will say that right now.
Thank you. So I think the, the, the print is coming over, so I will, I will continue with it. The, the, the application was presented to a planning board on October fifth of twenty twenty-three. The finding of fact and conclusion of law were developed in conjunction, uh, with consideration of the permanent application. Number two, conclusions of law. Based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and all the materials, uh, submitted to it, and the both, uh, findings of fact, the Belgrade planning board finds if project is permitted uh, for, uh, the remove from water edge and install all, uh, deck on house and move, uh, bedroom to lower level and add bath. Um, under the section fourteen, table one in, in the ordinance, and further makes the following conclusions. Table one in in the ordinance and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions in section. Sixteen D of the ordinance. Will maintain safe and healthy conditions. The board found the standard was met. Um, what was the phrase we used before? Uh, uh, currently have this printed down. Uh, according to the record, isn't it? Very soon. Bullet record is bullet record.
And the application uh submittals.
So we're gonna call that for now bullet record and applications submitted, we're gonna call it P. R A S. Right? So the board found the standard was uh uh was met based on P R I A A P R A S. And we're gonna go to bottom that. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister Surgeon.
Yes.
Mister Baker, Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, I vote yes, so five in favor, not opposed. Uh, will um will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surfaces. The board found the standard was met on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister Surgeon.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, I vote yes, five in favor, not opposed. Will adequately provide for disposal of all water, of all wastewater. The board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister Surgeon.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, I vote yes, so five in favor, not opposed. Will not have. An adverse impact on spawning. Grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, all the wildlife habitat. The board found the standard was met. Based on P R A S. Mister uh Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Surgeon.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, vote yes, so five in favor, not opposed.
Trying to trick us, aren't you?
I am. So uh. Yes. Uh, will construct short cover and visual as well as apple points of access to the inland waters. Base, the board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister uh uh Surgeon.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, I vote yes, so five in favor, not opposed. Will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. The board found this standard was met based on P R I A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister Surgeon.
Yeah.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, I vote yes, so five in favor, not opposed. Will avoid uh problems associated with flood, plain development, and use. The board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister Surgeon.
Yeah.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, I vote yes, so five in favor, not opposed. It is conformance with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. So we have a series, a number of standards here. You guys are gonna be very patient with us. It's about almost uh twenty of them. What we usually do is we go through all the standards, we determine which ones apply, and then we vote at the end. So minimum lot standards. Apply, this, that doesn't apply to these uh obligations, is it?
Uh, only to the extent we're dealing with a non-conforming lot and a non-conforming well, not. Uh, but nothing's being changed.
Nothing's been changed.
Yeah.
So N A. That will be N A, A will be N A. Principal and accessory structures.
Yes.
Campgrounds.
No.
N A. Individual private campsites.
No.
N A. Commercial industrial uses.
No.
N A. Parking areas. N A. Roads and driveways.
No.
N A. Signs.
No.
N A. Stormwater runoff.
Yes, yeah.
Septic waste disposal system.
Uh, well, we're adding bathroom and stuff, so I would say yeah, wrong.
Okay, yes. Essential services. N A. Mineral exploration and extraction.
Well, we got a lot of sand on that.
Under torture.
No.
N A. Timber harvesting and land management roads.
No.
Clearing or remover, removal of vegetation for activities other than timber har- harvesting. N A. Hazard trees, storm damaged trees and dead trees removal. N A. Exceptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements. N A. Revegetation requirements.
You say revegetation apply?
Yes, that will apply.
Uh, I'm gonna suggest a uh. Condition relating to the cement area, which is basically goes.
So it's gonna be the removal of the slab, a complete slab. And what was the last thing you said, Mister Baker?
Pardon me?
You said.
Oh, I I was uh gonna propose something like the. Area underneath the current permanent dock shall be restored to natural condition.
Right. Next one is erosion and sedimentation control. That's N A. N A. Shoreline stabilization. I'll say that twice.
Yeah.
Yes. So erosion and sedimentation control, N A.
Uh, I would say not.
Okay.
I mean, yes, it. Uh, especially where it relates to removal of the uh.
Soil.
Soil.
N A.
We're gonna replace.
So if all these things are related, I would, I would say he has.
He'll say yes.
Because of the same reason. The only the other issue is erosion.
Okay, water quality.
Yes.
Historical and archaeological sites.
No.
N A. Uh, resource protection. N A. So we have. We have. Uh, about se- uh eight. Uh, standards that uh that will um uh apply or be considered here. So with principal accessory structures. Stormwater runoff, septic waste disposal system, revi- reviate. Revegetation requirements. Erosion and sedimentation control, shoreline stabilization, soils, and water quality. The board found this standard was met on evidence in record and and. The seven, the eight uh standards already read. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mrs. Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister Surgeon.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, I vote yes, five in favor, not opposed. Right. So uh, conditions of approval needed to meet required Belgrade S L Z ordinance. Findings in section sixteen D. Uh, we have one that we always uh require every applicant to go by is the managed. Uh, stormwater runoff. From the new or span- uh Spanish structure in accordance to section fifteen I of the Belgrade Shore. Land zoning ordinance and the main department of the uh the environment protection. Best management practices. I think we have a copy of that in our website. Um, so that's the first one that uh the first condition we have, and then. We have a second condition that was the re- revegetation. Of the uh uh area where this slab is gonna be moved.
Yeah.
To.
And you're going to where you're going to. Exactly what I'm saying.
They put the post location, yeah.
Yeah, you're going to relate into the post removal.
Okay, resept middle. So I would say resept middle of joints with adjustment.
Structural adjustments.
Yep.
And that that has to do with the deck.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
But a deck is gonna stay the same, the structural.
Okay, cuz I was gonna suggest something like. The support post of the new deck shall be no lower than the current foundation at ground level. As to be shown by the applicant.
Yep, that's reasonable.
Yep.
Yeah, we're getting Mr. Baker. I would say recent middle of drawings where?
Uh, the support post. Of the new deck. Being no lower than the current foundation.
Oh, the new deck being. Being no lower.
Well, I I I had something different. I was trying to mesh it to what you said.
Sure.
My thought was uh the new deck, the new support posts for the new deck. Shall be no lower than.
Grade than current existing.
The current foundation.
That'll be no lower than current existing grade. Lowest, lowest existing grade.
And we still have enough room to have a deck.
I mean, it could be lower as long as you have that. Oh, no, it's right at twenty-five now, right?
Yeah.
That works.
Oh, yeah, it makes makes a lot of difference.
I have a question on the revegetation, right? Uh, oh, actually, uh, then, did you guys? Uh, like, right now, you have water access, right? Deck there, right? But once you remove that, did you want a small area to, you know?
We'll have a dock, they'll have a dock there.
Yeah.
And I'm I'm almost thinking on this site, based on my experience and the training I've been through with the D E P that. Some type of riprap to slow. The water as it cascades down that hill might be a better choice.
Right.
Uh, but we're gonna do something that we're gonna improve it draft.
Well, yeah, not having a. Right.
Yeah, I'm just gonna think you could, you know, put a burn there too, right?
Right, that's what I'm leaning towards.
And then you could also put a uh in by him and Doc and run it up. So you can get up there, you know.
Yeah.
Good advertisement here.
All right, so the second condition will be the res- recent metal of drawings. With a support post of new deck located not lower than the present existing grade.
Perfect.
Then we're gonna um. Are we gonna revegetate or doing the riprap? Is this?
I I guess my thinking is we don't wanna tell them what to do.
Okay.
We just wanna say we're restoring naturally or s- uh other method, approved method. And by approved, I mean you're gonna be doing this within seventy-five feet of water. You're gonna need a permit by rule. From uh D E P, so I think our our point is just restore the area.
Right.
Uh.
To natural condition.
Yes.
Well, that will be the uh, the original deck area, restore original deck area.
To natural condition, uh, natural or similar conditions to prevent erosion to the water.
Right, break loss here. So the third portion of this thing is the decision, so based on the above findings of facts. And conclusion of law of day October fifth, twenty twenty-three. The town of Belgrade Planning Board approved. It should be shoreline permitting application of. Taylor. And Catherine. Benson. With the above conditions and a a meeting of ten. Five twenty-three. Develop. Uh, develop the these written findings of facts and conclusion of law. On remand on the uh Belgrade Board of Appeals and adopted on the following on. Um, and adopt the findings on ten five twenty-three. So the board approved by a vote, um, we're gonna vote on this in the whole application now. So Mister Baker.
Uh, yes, with the two conditions that we have.
Right, uh, Mister Sakaro.
Yes.
Mister uh Surgeon.
Yes.
Mister Seal.
Yes.
And Mr. Onget, we make a vote of five. In favor, approved application on the date of ten five twenty-three. And signed by Sarah Onget, Mister Chair, and we have approved. Application and you're gonna be working with uh Mister Azmuzen to get your permit.
Thank you. Sarah, well.
So um, just uh.
Sarah, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, as I sat here, I figured out a way that might be able to save you an hour and a half on twelve. Um, in looking at.
Going back to two twenty.
Going back, going back to the previous application. If we took this building and just turned it, pivoted it, actually even moved it away from the road twelve inches. Moved it back from the lake, repeat, just turned it square, we would be over the seventy-five.
Oh, yeah.
All we have to do is square it up with the property.
Right.
And we would be moving it back to the most practical extent, so I think that's something that you'd want.
Would you, you would be?
Would be gaining four feet. Three, three feet, she will three feet.
It would not be.
The total eleven.
Twenty-five, greater than twenty-five feet.
Well, they'd be moving it back.
We'd be on the seventy-five.
Back.
Okay. Oh.
So they hold eleven feet the whole way, instead of right now, they're holding eleven to fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
They would turn it so they hold eleven the whole way. They should now hit this corner and bring this back three feet. Making it square.
This building is being demolished, so it's a, it's it's an easy.
Right.
It's an easy thing we can.
There was two things, was that, was the distance and the height, wasn't it? Okay, about here.
We're gonna be beyond the seventy-five.
We were worried they were too close to the wall.
Yeah, yeah.
But now, it, they had it on an angle where it was, on one corner was eleven feet off the road, the other corner was fourteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
He's suggesting, take it, square it up with the road and move it back, which the further small, further smallest point would now bring that back three feet. So you'd probably well over the seventy-five foot. Cause right now, they have it measured at seventy-six, so you'd be looking at like seven, almost, you know, seventy-nine or, you know, seventy-nine and a half.
Is that gonna make it okay for the person that's, um, wheelchair?
I think it's actually gonna make it better, we were talking about that, as, I think it's gonna make it better, cause the driveway is over here and it just. Little rocks into these, that way it makes it easier.
Yeah.
So, but it kinda just sat out front of us there for a little bit.
True, true.
It's a while.
It should pass later, right?
What's that?
Should pass later.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a.
Thank you.
So, you hear that, Mr. Seal?
Um, yes, I could, uh, obviously I can't. Visualize it entirely, but conceptually it sounds okay. Obviously, we have to reserve, uh, judgment until we saw a revised, uh, drawing.
Do you, um, have that revised plot, uh, plot plan in front of you, George?
Um, I believe I do somewhere, where is it? No.
Uh, I think he only had the second application, let me see if hands and send, and send them out.
I got it up now.
Okay. So our, uh, we're suggesting that the eleven foot setback on the, if you're looking at it from Foster's point, the back left part of the property. We just pivot, we just pivot it on that eleven foot and keep the whole back of the house. Parallel with Foster's point, so it would be eleven everywhere, instead of fourteen on the other side. So that would bring us back beyond the seventy-five foot mark. This home is being demolished anyway, so it's, it's, you know, it's not a difficult thing for us to do and it. I think moves it back to the most practical extent.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I, I, I certainly agree with your latter statement, I, um. The, this drawing actually i- is even more confusing to me than the, uh, prior one. Because it has the, uh, e- existing, um, or ha- the proposed, uh, building at the moment, wait a minute. Maybe I'm not reading this right, one story. On this drawing, is the, uh, crosshatched, um, the existing structure?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh. And so you would move that back even further than the driveway?
Uh, you're looking at the Foster's Point drawing, two twenty-five Foster's Point.
Uh.
I don't know where the camera.
I'm looking at the drawing that Han sent me and it doesn't say what the address is.
It should be on the.
And unfortunately, the Where Butler stuff, uh, is too small to read.
Can you, can you see on the camera as I hold that?
You know what, I'm gonna take your and the rest of the board's word. Cause, uh, I, I don't wanna waste everybody's time, just cause I'm.
George, George Homs just sent you another email. That has some, uh, better image for you.
All right.
I mean, without question, you did put it back another three, with this, with this close plan.
Oh.
Whatever the number is now, it's now three feet back from that, whatever that number is. It's now pushed back another three feet.
Correct.
Okay, but by pushing back, is that gonna? Reduce, reduce the height of the structure of to?
No, but it'll put it beyond seventy-five feet, yeah, right, but even at, at distances.
Less than a hundred feet from a normal high water line, the height restriction is still twenty-five feet.
Right. Well, I mean, depending on what, what the, what the slope is.
Yeah, but I, I, are you turning it a hundred and eighty degrees?
You know, just by three degrees.
Yeah, okay.
The three degrees.
But, but to the hundred foot line, you still need to make sure that the front of the structure to the top of the. Structure is less than twenty-five feet, or twenty-five feet or less. Because, you know, we've still got the same issue. Wherever the front of the structure is, you go straight up to meet. At a horizontal level, the top of the, the structure. We still have the same issue, that has to be. Thirty-seven, it's a hundred foot, hundred, uh, what they. We're looking at non-conforming structures. Uh. See, the structure is located less than one hundred feet from the normal high water line and great ponds. Uh, the maximum combined total footprint of all structures shall not be expanded greater than fifteen hundred square feet. The maximum height of the structure may not be made greater than twenty-five feet or the height of the existing structure.
Right, but it's, it's twenty-five feet now, though. Correct, no, what is it now?
Um, at the front there, it's not twenty-five, I mean, that, if you move back beyond. Where the porch is, is twenty-five, but that kinda goes contradictory to. The way we're calculating, like, right now, if you, if you look at that, you have some of the pictures there, when you, if you stand on the lake side. And you look back at Foster Point, you're looking up at, you're looking up at, probably sixteen feet of wall. And then a roof, and so we're gonna change that and, and bring it down significantly. We're gonna go up ten feet and have a deck and tier it, and then it will go back up again. You know, you know. It's, it's a, it's a major improvement, I mean, it's, you know. I mean, I don't know what to say, other than it's, it's, it's a drastic improvement to the site. And I think, that's why I asked about what the intent of the, the rule was, as you look at it from an aesthetic standpoint, if you. Are on the property, you're driving by in a boat or whatever, it's gonna look a lot less intrusive, intrusive than it does right now. And you can see that, you can see that from photos.
Hmm, I, I guess my thought is, I don't, I don't disagree with that, uh, but. That doesn't, the intent or whatever, doesn't.
Yeah, it's really.
Doesn't, it's got to meet the standard that we have as written. Um, and by tilting it a little bit, isn't gonna change. The fact that it can't be more than twenty-five feet high from the front of the structure.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I, I don't think that's a solution.
But I thought you.
I thought it was seventy-five foot, that you're.
No, it's a hundred.
I thought it was talking seventy-five foot and. It comes under the natural, uh, non-comforming.
Base ten, normalize water line.
Yeah, yeah, it's very great, but wherever I have a.
I thought you were gonna rotate the building.
Yeah, but it.
Just, just a few degrees to get, we were, I was suggesting we do it to get to the seventy-five foot mark.
Okay, I thought you were gonna rotate it.
No.
Eighty degrees.
No.
Yeah.
I would agree if, if it said there at seventy-five feet.
Right.
The height is thirty-five feet.
Right.
You'd have it covered, probably have it covered anyway, no matter what you did, and it feels back underfoot.
Okay, so we went back to Plan A, who, who, who will do it, uh, site.
I, I would think so, I don't think we can approve the news, Plan B.
Not at this point.
Yeah, but it says, it says that the maximum height of any structure may not be made greater than twenty-five feet. Or the height of the existing structure, whichever is greater.
Yeah.
So they're keeping it at the existing structure height.
It, it would.
I'm sorry.
It, it would be greater because we are, we are proposing a ten-twelve pitch versus a six-twelve. So if you look at those photos, you can see it kind of ranch looking right now, it's got a six-twelve. And we're proposing to make it a ten-twelve pitch, but we did that in conjunction, in conjunction with stepping that front back, so. Like I said, I still think it's quite an accurate thing.
Are you moving back?
No, the, we're, we're, we are on the road.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, it's tight.
Go back to Plan A.
I think.
No, 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 that's it. You would have to try to figure out a way to keep that height, and what, whatever that elevation is that that house is at now. You, you would have to try to keep it at that same elevation.
And at the same time, with that deck going in the front, that has to be considered.
So, yeah, yeah, but it's still, it's still the same footprint, still.
If we can dig further into the slope, right?
If you dug into the slope.
You can keep it, you keep it the same.
Wow, I don't know, but you're still measuring the height of the house.
Yeah.
You know, whatever, if, if it's greater than twenty-five feet, the, um, the current hot structure. He could go to whatever that elevation is, as long as it doesn't get any higher than the current, the current property.
It's, you gotta, I, it's more of a pitch.
Yeah.
You'd have to dig back quite a bit, right, apart, then you get into. Uh, have less distance between the building going back further and, and the road itself, you know, Foster Point Road, so if you get. Any of that, you know.
How, how big of a difference, how much higher is it gonna be?
Uh, it's about fourteen, oh, three, fourteen.
And for me, the bottom line is, the front of that. Deck. Is where the, straight down from there, is where the building height is measured. And up to the peak of the roof, there, whether it's the new peak or the old peak, that's where the measurement is taken.
Right.
I think it won't be worth it to do this, I guess. Just, just because, uh, then we'll clear all the possible confusion into that. So you have a permit? And, uh, why, why motion to the process?
Thank you, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you. So.
If you were playing baseball, five hundred.
Me thirty, thirty.
At all stuff. I didn't mean to. Joking off your African.
So. Um, man. We gonna, we're gonna still do a site visit, man, I'm sorry, make you work extra, sorry. So this goes. With the, uh. Second application, so we're gonna, we have to sign that second application. Yeah, so this is a pitch for a second application, this is the final facts of the second application.
When to handle. How to talk, see, I saw. Prove any conditions.
Please come to me, okay?
Yeah.
All right, sorry, guys. We need the paperwork here. And the conditions.
Okay, I think I stole your, uh.
Oh, you're gonna.
Something then?
Thank you, thanks. Yes, one please.
Hey, Han, well, Sarah's working there and, um, procedure for. Sending out the letter to Mr. S- the stuff out there or?
Awesome.
Anyway, uh, I don't know. Where do we go from here, did you put that together, should I? Finalize this letter for signature from Sarah?
Um, I can delete that sentence.
Okay, that's, that's just a phrase there, the other thing I'll point out, and I. I, I didn't say it at times, it's something really rinky-dank, but, uh, I got a, a letter ace in there that shouldn't be there. Uh, so, I'll give, I'll give you, uh, your copy back here, that you gave me. Um.
So, Mr. Seal, it's very real to stop by at some points and sign later.
Um. I could come into the town office tomorrow morning and sign it.
Thank you. I have a training next week, it's. Thursday, is it the twelfth Friday? The twelfth is Thursday. I'm gonna be at the training. That's okay, I think, I think, uh, at least the four of us will be going, and I bet by, uh. I should have brought myself home, would you mind calendar on it? I'm fine. You only need three there, we'll be fine. You only need three to the site, yeah. And it's gonna be, I think, three, four, four of us, so. Should be. Five of them, you can vote, even if two of you want it in the site. Say that again. I can vote even if two of them weren't at the site. Uh, no, they have to be at least three at the site.
No, no, just, can, do all five, if a couple people are missing out of the five.
Yeah.
Can they still vote on the application, if they're not?
Right, the people, only the people that are at the site can vote on the application, I would say.
You think so? Cause. I guess you wanna make sure you have three people at the meeting, man.
I don't think that's accurate, because you don't always do a site visit, some, some people do, there's, it's unknown.
Yeah.
But if we, we're including application on site visit, the same people that were here. And, um.
I think, I think in the past, in the past, I think people who haven't been at the site visit, as long as they've been part of the discussions.
And vote.
Can vote, because, uh, typically someone writes up a summary of what the site visit. And you're typical, and George is typical of putting that information together of what was found at the site.
Usually, this is really providing good info, and, and, and the community is. This is not to me, too, so, so, you know, I thought, I would, but every, at least the people that went to the visit should be the ones that'll be voting. But in, at the, uh, at the site, at least three have to be there, is that correct, Mr. Mr. Baker? We're gonna do a site visit, at least four of them have to be there, this is a meeting.
Um.
A quarter of the board have to be there.
I guess so.
Okay, so that, that was the part that was throwing me off a little bit.
Certainly, uh, cool.
So I did, it's just, uh, making sure, in, in my mind, at least it will be. That, that thing, four that went there to be consistent with the whole application. If we, if instead of four of us, only three went there, then only the three that came back will be able to vote. You said that that's not the case.
I mean, if they're here for the meeting, I mean, they were here for the meeting, you know, all. And we, we're even done.
That's, that's good, we don't have to.
Just for the record, within seventy-five feet, it's a, it's a thousand square feet and, and twenty on height.
Within seventy.
Within seventy-five, yeah. Yeah, the seventy-five foot mark kicks in, where you can go up to twenty-five and under fifty.
Sarah, going back to the question, the prior question about who can vote, if, um, can, can board members vote that are unable to make it to the, um, uh, site visit, uh, I believe the, the gut, uh, planning board guidance from MMA, uh, that's on their website, and, uh, I believe the town office has a paper copy, um, indicates that, uh, they can, uh, it's just that you have to either have a report of the findings of the, um, a written fi- uh, findings of the site visit in the public record and available to everybody, or you need to discuss the, the findings at the, at the meeting. The fa- uh, the following meeting.
Okay, that's good.
Because, because it becomes part of the, it's part of the public record, uh, and there's no, there's no requirement on the number of people that, uh, m- m- minimum number of people that have to do a site visit either. Um, the, uh, in the past, we've actually done it where just one person was able to make it, and, and in one case it was, or two people, in one case it was, uh, a case that actually went to court and it was just Peter Rushton and myself, and we did a report, a written report back to the board, and, uh, and that held up the, you know, legal scrutiny.
Right, I appreciate the clarification, thank you so very much. So with your own timeline, yes. So if I only show up, we should be fine. Alright, so with that, yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add, and, and I, this is,
I talk, I'm way out of it, but, uh, you know, we are putting a request in for, uh, an attorney, um, about the handicap allowance.
Yeah.
And I don't know if possibly a handicap allowance would permit anything, George would probably know, you guys would tell. You know, I could make sure to get something for.
The handicap provision applies to access to the structure.
Right, but they were saying they were keeping that handicap was gonna be in the basement, so I don't know if somehow that worked in with the height, if that was something.
I, I don't think so, I think, like I said, the handicap rule which allows things maybe be lesser setback or whatever, is strictly for access to the dwelling. Uh, and I think it, I'm quite sure it applies to someone who's, uh, either lives there or, and I don't know, I'm not sure, Hans, do you know, or do you remember that language at all?
That's for the direction of their residence. When operations are big, so once the property is sold, or that person ceases to live there, the conversion must back to a, code must be done.
But, for instance, an example would be if somebody, the, the front entrance was, uh, facing the water or what have you, and that is the, and the main entrance, and somebody needed to put on a, run steps only to our four feet or whatever, and they need a five-foot ramp, and you could allow the ramp to, to do that.
Yeah, Nick, I don't, I don't have anything to add to what Rich said, um. I do know from, um, talking to my wife, who's a former, um, uh, attorney for MMA, the, uh, that their court decisions on this very subject, and I think, you know, we'll have to see what the, our attorney, um, guides us on based on those court decisions with regard to, uh, how much leeway, uh, structures accommodating, uh, handicap. I- i- is required under shoreline zoning.
Alright, so, um, we wrap this question on that. We got a permit for you guys tonight. And. Yeah, it's all signed, everything's wrapped up, all the people work. So I guess, uh, you guys can talk to Hans about getting the permit. And we will move on to all business.
Thank you all very much for taking the time, I appreciate you helping.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, absolutely, thank you, hon.
Yeah, and they left.
And your mother. They lost to get a home.
Oh, okay. We were also there with that, yeah. I grew up, my wedding. He graduated with my brother off six months, and, uh, he's a really easy guy.
And all that Victorian, you know, and my mother.
They, they need a rich.
My sister. That's what it made, my parents are in the back.
Well, they did a great job on, yeah. Yeah, because that was, yeah, that was in rough shape, but they did the whole thing. That's beautiful, that's actually a very nice section.
The project, yeah, go right across the freeway, and take your dog for a walk, and.
Yeah.
I know that, and hit those trails back there.
Hey, Hans, um, when, is Hans there?
Yeah.
I can't see him, but, um, wh- while you were out of the room, uh, I agreed that I would come in tomorrow morning to the town office to, uh, sign the, the permit. So if you could have that, I, I don't know if you're in tomorrow morning, but um, if not, is it possible to have that somewhere where I can sign it?
I'll be here.
Alright, pretty good.
So we are in approval of previous minutes, nine twenty-one. I'm gonna ask a question. She is our secretary.
And she's not here, how does she do the minute? Is she listening or something?
She, no, she, uh, the, all this, uh, meeting is being recorded. Uh, so this is, uh, posted on the internet, and she picked it up from there, and she got the minutes. Well, something, yeah. Technology. Yeah.
Still works in time, just at a different location.
That's right.
I wasn't here, so I can't. I, I was, but, uh, it's not, not listed as being in-person attendees.
You actually, she asked you talking.
Yeah, she had my talk.
Yeah, she just forgot that. Let's finish, I didn't answer, four. Ready? We're good?
Well, pretty much, that's just the, uh, old business, uh, George and Elaine, Richard, second paragraph, um. I would recommend the, um, first line of the second paragraph, where it says at the end of the, the line with a larger footprint on this, not informing a lot, because, uh, we're talking about specific issue here on this law. And also, uh, I would, uh, the, the last, uh, line on that paragraph would not be permitted as proposed.
Okay, so those two changes? Anything else in the minutes that needs to be changed? Mr. Steel?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not gonna vote on the minutes and wouldn't presume to know what was.
Yeah, I can't forget that, I'm sorry.
And then just add me to the present.
Yeah, and then I, Mr. Sakara to the, uh, board members that were present, Nick Sakara.
And you get a good test.
So, uh, I wanted them a motion to approve the minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as a method.
Alright. Excellent, so we have a motion and a second. So we're gonna vote now. So, Mr. Baker.
Yes.
This is the car.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant.
Yes.
And Mr. Longe, we approve, zero, I mean, four approved, none opposed.
How can the general vote if he wasn't here?
He was, I was, yeah.
He was here.
Oh, it doesn't say that.
Well, we just mentioned, yeah.
Okay, you mentioned it, thank you, I missed that part wrong.
That's okay.
Good.
So, with that, we are moving into the CEO updates.
Nothing.
Nothing. Do, do we?
George, update. Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I can't now.
This will be on top of my file cabinet tomorrow, just in case. Busy when you get here, you can sign it and do what you want to.
Just put it on, just put it on your desk then?
Yeah, or leave it on the top of the file cabinet.
Okay.
Obviously, but.
Perfect. So, um, do we know how many more applications we have in the following time to, to have, uh, uh, the volume punch back most likely? Or the.
Yeah, we'll have these two, and um, I've got one that I can keep postponing.
Okay.
So.
So, uh, we, we have, we'll make a long, we had made a longer list of things that we need to be adding. Do you think that next time we'll have enough time to at least knock out one of the items?
Then there wouldn't be two.
So we, I was, I was thinking, we already had kind of a pre-order that, uh, placing the, uh, implementation of the new ordinance uh, for the subdivisions, new subdivision ordinance, so we'll read the new application form, the completeness of the checklist, finding of facts, and, uh, 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 conclusion of law, and checklist of submission of, for amendments of previously approved sub- submissions. So maybe a lot of that list, if I leave, at least we tackle, I will say, I'll try to tackle, the new application form and the. I would say we'll try to tackle the new application form and the completeness checklist. Would that be enough? What do you guys think? Sure.
Um. I don't know if you saw my email response to yours, um, but I, I think we need to add uh one more item to that to-do list and that is. Uh, to discuss, start discussing our budget for two thousand twenty-four. And um. Because we'll be asked for that budget probably in November, late November, early December.
That's true. Well, I just misunderstood it, Mr. uh CEO, because that was number three in the list. So I thought, oh, you said they were, were not even priority order, never mind. I, I skipped that very quickly. Right, so I'm glad you mentioned that. So uh, so then, then uh, uh, we'll do that there. Everybody else is agreeing with doing that? Just uh going over the budget for next year?
Sure.
Alright, so that is what's gonna be added and uh for the next meeting and I will send that an email. To Mr. Razmuzin about that. That works?
Yep.
Thank you. Um. Come on. So, uh, that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It wa- it would have any word to, to discuss. Mr. Steel?
Nope.
You okay?
Yes. Four, but I'm okay.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Who's gonna second? Alright, so, Mr. Baker.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Zakharov.
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes.
And Mr. uh, Mr. Steel?
Yep.
And Mr. Longe said yes, five in favor and none opposed and we are closed.
Yeah, and both of them go adjourn.
That's okay. I'm just getting my big wet.